We'll have, you can wait out in the hallway and they'll bring you in one at a time. Follow Officer Wally out there. You got up first.
I have a feeling I am. My name is Kathy Faulkner. I live here in Visalia. And for months residents here in Visalia have been, crowds like in the nation have been protesting in peaceful protests of federal actions that have related to cuts from Medicare, from research, from climate action, education, growing economic uncertainty about tariffs, and the deportation without due process, while tax cuts are given to the top 1%. In Visalia, crowds have gathered along heavily traveled roadways. They've been wave, honk, and they know that they're safe because they are one phone call away from the police department. As we celebrate the anniversary on 9/11, we look back over years of school fatal shootings. The last few weeks, children in a church hall and then a local resident. Domestic terrorists and gun violence is growing. The assassination of Charlie Kirk, a young conservative activist, while abhorrent, is not likely to be our last. Here in America, taking the life of anyone at school, work, field, standing along a street by gun or a weapon is immoral. It's unseparable in America. It brings fear and trepidation to those that are concerned, and they're worried that when they stand on the streets, they may be a victim. So now Visalia, I ask the city council, your leadership and your support, to bring about and initiate a community action, a platform for public engagement, one where people come together, where you build relationships, debate issues, viewpoints shared, and common threads that tie us together, not split us apart. The public had presented at the press conference by Utah's Governor Cox said, he has to question, "Is this the end of a dark chapter in our history? Is this just the beginning?" There was a survey this weekend and thousands responded to it. For those who answered, "Is this the end of a dark chapter?", 2% said it was. 98% said it is only the beginning. And I reach out to you, the city council, to initiate a conversation with our community, to bring about a civil discussion amongst our community members so that violence will not be an issue, but only adjoining and tying and uniting together. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Yeah, yes, you do have to be in line to speak, so if you plan to speak, please do so. Please join the line now.
I can't stand for very long.
Okay, we will, we'll work you in.
Thank you.
She want to go before me?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, my name is Stephanie McDonald. I'm here from Visalia, California. Vice Mayor Wen, council members, and members of the community. I stand before you tonight, not just as a citizen, but as a registered nurse, a mother, a wife, and a Christian. My four-year-old son came to me this week and asked, "Mommy, why are people happy he was shot and killed?" Think about that. A child of God rooted in faith, too young to read the news, too young to understand politics, could see the cruelty that some adults chose to celebrate this. If even a child can recognize that wrong, then what excuse does a city leader have for endorsing it? That is why I stand before you tonight, because when one of our leaders publicly endorses cruelty in a time of grief and division, silence is not an option. Every day, I care for people, regardless of their beliefs, regardless of whether they agree or disagree with me, and oftentimes when they insult me, and I do it without hesitation. That is my calling and my duty, and I am held to a higher standard. And let's be clear, if I ever publicly endorsed cruelty towards someone who lost their life, I would lose my job, and Mr. Soto should be held to no less. Mr. Soto, you may not have written that post, but when you chose to like it, it told this community where you stand, and it wasn't with compassion, humanity, or with the grieving children or family of a man who was shot and killed in cold blood. It was with cruelty. And for that, sir, you should be ashamed of yourself. We are angry and we have every right to be, but we are also resolved. Resolved to remind you that leadership is not about casual clicks on social media. It is about compassion. It is about dignity and responsibility. Leaders are held to higher standards, and when they fail them, they must rise, apologize, and repair, or step aside. And yes, you have the right to free speech. In fact, Charlie fought for and gave his life for that very right. And while the First Amendment protects your right to speak, it does not shield you from the public perception that has eroded our confidence in your leadership. Our community deserves leaders who stand for humanity, leaders who bridge divides, who inspire people on both sides to put down their shields and to come together. Leaders who remind us that even in disagreements, we are still neighbors, still bound to one another by shared humanity. That is the kind of leadership our community longs for, not the kind that likes and endorses hate. That leaves us with one only path forward. Apologize to the families of this community and to the city, and then resign your position. Because right now, you are not only failing to lead, you are diminishing the very office that you hold, and our community deserves better. Thank you.
Ms. Keen, would you like to go now? Oh, okay. Come on in.
Good evening, council members. My name is Ellen Waitala, and I am a citizen of Visalia. I am here to say that Emmanuel Soto's recent actions and his Facebook like on a post concerning Charlie Kirk's death have deeply disappointed our community. Liking a post that sympathizes with murder is unacceptable for a public official. Public officials, along with clergy and educators, are held to a higher standard due to the trust the community has placed on them. Mr. Soto's actions show lack of judgment, sensitivity, and respect for our community's values. Since I don't know Mr. Soto's motive behind hitting the thumbs up button on the post, I would like to ask Mr. Soto this question. How do you feel about the assassination of Charlie Kirk? I request that you, Mr. Soto, make a public statement to set the record straight. Understand that no response is a response. And in that case, we as a community demand you resign from your position because our community deserves leaders who stand for unity, decency, and respect. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
My name is Beth Solber. Ladies and gentlemen, fellow residents of Visalia and members of the city council, I am born and raised Visalian. I stand before you today with a heavy heart and a resolute demand that Emmanuel Hernandez Soto, that you must resign from your position as city council member for District 4 immediately. This is not a decision I take lightly, but one driven by a profound betrayal of trust and the core values that bind our community together. In the wake of the tragic assassination of Charlie Kirk, council member Soto chose to approve with a thumbs up a social media post that sympathized with the assassination of Charlie Kirk. Let that sink in. A post that expressed support for such violence against a fellow American simply because of his religious and political beliefs is not mere disagreement. This is a vile reprehensible endorsement of violence and hatred. Our community did not elect leaders who harbor such dark opinions. We voted for representatives who uphold decency, unity, and respect for human life. Regardless of ideology, Visalia deserves better than a council member who aligns himself with those who would sympathize with spilling the life's blood of a fellow citizen. Charlie Kirk's legacy continues to expose very evil lurking around us, whether it's in classrooms, lecture halls, or even our own halls of government. But Soto's actions reveal a sympathy for that darkness, and we cannot tolerate it. This is unacceptable, and it erodes the fabric of our decency and our democracy while endangering us all. Council member Soto, if you have any shred of honor left, step down now. Let us replace you with our leader who truly reflects compassion and integrity and moral clarity our city demands. With my remaining moment, I just want to say that I have made some terrible mistakes in my life. And I believe that in the times that I had humility to recognize and apologize, grace is able and forgiveness is able to flow. And unfortunately, I've had to deal with the consequences of my decisions, and it hurts terribly. But I'm thankful that in those times, as I've matured through life, when I did take that humility, it propelled me to a different plateau of understanding my fellow humans, and even a little bit about myself and the things that I need to do better. And now that I stand here looking at you, you're such a young, handsome, sweet-looking young man, and I really just pray that blessing on you, and I just hope you make the right decision. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening, citizens, council members. My name is Reagan O'Hara, and I am the founding chairman of Young Americans for Freedom at the College of the Sequoias in Visalia, the leading conservative group on campus. I come before you because I am deeply disturbed by council member Soto's recent actions on social media. Over the last year, I have been repeatedly been called fascist, Nazi, bigoted, racist, transphobic, homophobic, had death wished upon me, and so much more than I cannot repeat here. I've even been assaulted simply because I dare stand up for Christian conservative values at a public college. As someone who has personally experienced the absolutely abusive rhetoric propagated by the left on college campuses, it comes to me as no surprise that something like this would happen. We as Americans need to stand up together and rebuke anyone who would celebrate political violence in America and shun them from polite society. Freedom of speech does not mean freedom from consequences, especially for atrocious actions. It is completely and utterly reprehensible to support any of this, and the numbers agree. According to a YouGov poll posted on Thursday, just 8% of American adults thought it was acceptable to celebrate the death of an opposing public figure. You must be bold and continue fighting to keep extremists out of our political systems. With that, I demand the immediate resignation and apology from Councilman Soto for supporting such a horrific event. And I also have just one question for Councilman Soto. Would you celebrate my death if I were murdered on campus? Lastly, as YAF chairman, I promise that we will continue to boldly fight against the radical leftists who would celebrate this no matter the costs. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening, city council members, Vice Mayor Wen, and the rest of the audience. My name is Patricia Huizar. I am a resident of Visalia. If you'd like, I can spell my last name. H-U-I-Z-A-R. I'm here to say that Emmanuel Soto's recent actions and Facebook likes have deeply disappointed our community. Liking a post that sympathizes with the assassination of Charlie Kirk is unacceptable for a public official. It shows a lack of judgment, sensitivity, and respect for our community's values. We demand that Mr. Soto issue a full apology and resign from his position. Our community deserves leaders who stand for unity, decency, and respect. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. It's very good to see you. This is my first ever time speaking, you know, in a place like this.
Can you, you can pull it up a little.
Hello.
Don't breach his, there you go.
Can everybody hear me?
Yeah. Name and city, please.
I am Jordan Gomez, and I am from the city of Visalia, right here. And I've come here to talk today as a representative of Turning Point. You know, I, I'm a very, very much supporter of free speech, and I do in fact support Emmanuel Hernandez Soto's, you know, he can agree with whatever, but, you know, agreeing with barbarians and barbaric rhetoric like that, that just ain't right. And I'm saying this, none of you should stand by this. He needs to go out. That's all. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Shelley Gagin. I can spell it if you need me to.
Last name, please.
G-A-H-A-G-A-N, and I'm a resident of Visalia. So I'm here this evening with a lot of emotion. Upset, disappointment, outrage. Community leaders have a duty to promote unity and healing, especially in the face of a tragedy that happened, not create division. Debate isn't divisive. What is divisive is liking a post that sympathizes with the violent act and the murder of another human being. We expect decency from our leaders, not this. Some, I've noticed, I've seen come to Mr. Soto's defense professing that his, he posted that he was, he cared about the victim's family, and he denounced the violence. Well, words are easy. Actions reveal true character. On one hand, he wants to denounce the violence, but on the other hand, he engages in a post celebrating the murder of another human being by putting his stamp of approval on the post. That is Mr. Soto's, the true nature of his character. We must ask ourselves, is this the type of leadership we want in our community? Is this a role model we want for our children and our grandchildren? My answer is absolutely no. Mr. Soto, your actions have alienated and hurt a large swath of the community. You owe them an apology, and we demand your resignation. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Smith, S-A-R-A. I live here in Visalia, and I am the proud president of Visalia Republican Women Federated, the largest Republican Women Federated club in California. Emmanuel Soto claims to represent all of Visalia, but his behavior regarding Charlie Kirk's death proves otherwise. Supporting or liking posts that condone violence is unacceptable, especially for someone in a leadership position. Visalia needs leaders who promote peace, understanding, and respect. I do that as club president. Leaders are to help educate the masses and bring community together, not pull them down and create division. Emmanuel, James 3, James 3:1 says, "Let not many of you become teachers, knowing that we shall receive a stricter judgment." You're in a leadership position, Mr. Soto, as am I. Not many become teachers or leaders. But the Bible states that you will be judged with greater strictness. The more you claim to know, the more accountable you are held for what you say and do and whom you agree with. I ask Mr. Soto to reflect, apologize, resign, and learn the importance of empathy, and to ask himself how he could be a better leader. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Jessica Bromley, and I am also from Visalia. And I am appalled by Emmanuel Soto's recent social media activity. His like on a post that sympathizes with an act of violence against Charlie Kirk reveals his true beliefs, beliefs that are incompatible with the values of our community. Liking a post is not a mere oversight. It's a sign of support. We all know this. Mr. Soto, the community demands your resignation and a sincere apology for your inappropriate actions. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tom Bromley. I'm from Visalia, California. Emmanuel Soto's justification that he likes all posts is a weak excuse for such a serious breach of judgment. As a council member, he has a responsibility to uphold and exemplify the values of civility and respect. Instead, he has shown a side that is divisive and unfit to serve. We call for his resignation and a heartfelt apology to the community.
Good evening. My name is Karen Griffin, and I recently moved from Visalia to Exeter. I have one thing I'd like to start with. I believe that the actions speak louder than words, and Mr. Soto's social media activity and likes suggest that he condones violence and hate. This is unacceptable from anyone, let alone an elected official. As we have...
Pull it down. There you go. Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
As we've seen with multiple government employees who have lost their jobs for this type of conduct, we ask him to issue a public apology and to step down from his city council position, understanding that leadership does require a higher standard of responsibility, empathy, and respect. And then personally, that was the truth that I believe about that issue, but I'd also like to speak life and hope to Mr. Soto. As a person, when preparing for tonight, I did a little research, and I noticed your LinkedIn post, and there was a motto of yours that said something like, "I'm a young man making mistakes, trying to grow wiser." And I took that as truth, and I thought, as a Christian and as a professional educator, how would I coach you to move forward during this difficult time? And I would say three things. Humble yourself. You can never go wrong by humbling yourself in life. Lean into God. Ask Him what He wants you to learn from this. Do it, and become a better man. And then trust Him, number three. He has a call on your life, and if it's politics, He'll open a door and bring you back stronger than ever. I truly pray this for you. There is hope, and there is life after this. Thank you.
Good afternoon, city council members. My name is Ephraim Vezetta. I live in District 1, Vice Mayor Wen. Thank you for being here and giving us the opportunity to have a open dialogue. I was not going to speak today, but I decided to speak because I see a lot of rhetoric going on from both sides of the aisle. But at the same time, I cannot tolerate when there's people not hold accountable, right? I ran for city council, and I was told that I was very harsh on all of five of you, right? And I think I've had a very good relationship now with you, and I've kept my promise. I think I've tried to work with you, take your advice, and being here for the community as I was last Saturday, using my abilities. There will always be backlash from people. You can never please everybody. All five of you have lived that. Being a council member is not the easiest job. Being president, being a governor, or any state senate, or any office is not the easiest thing. And people don't realize that. Being a public figure is not easy. So what I wanted to say is, I see a lot of backlash towards Emmanuel Soto, but what I do not see is a lot of backlash being held towards our president that attacked one of his own, John McCain. That's one of the hypocrisies that I cannot stand from the Republican Party. So people make mistakes. Nobody is perfect. I'm accountable for what I did, and I apologize to all five of you for attacking you guys. So I believe in diplomacy. Charlie Kirk did say that without dialogue, civil war starts. So I believe in dialogue, 100% free speech. I'm an advocate for free speech. Unfortunately, I don't agree with what happened to Charlie. I didn't agree with his policies because I am a Hispanic, right? So I think that it's very important to hold both sides accountable, and I cannot tolerate hypocrisy also. If I was told by many behind me to change my ways and the way I came across during the campaign trails, I believe that they should be held accountable also. Thank you guys for what you do. Appreciate.
Are we allowed to record in here?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. This is, it's being recorded. Yeah.
Good evening. Deanie Souza, Visalia. Thank you for letting me come today. You know, I just want to speak from the heart right now. Emmanuel, I know that you are, you're not happy right now, and I get it. The last couple of weeks in the city of Visalia have been not by accident. We have had, I mean, there is no accident that Charlie Kirk was here two weeks ago, and there was no accident on that like button. And there was no accident when I watched people behind me come into the space and create division immediately. And when I watched those same people not salute our flag and not be cohesive as citizens of this community, that, that, that like has really, truly been dangerous. I mean, all of them are, and, and I'm, I feel sorry for you. I really do. But you're in a position where you're supposed to remain neutral as far as representing all of us. And liking that content is not, is not innocent. It reflects poorly on your character and your ability to serve all of the citizens fairly. So I would really like to call to ask you to publicly apologize for that and repent for the hurt that you have caused many, and hopefully our city can get back together. And maybe you should consider stepping down at this point.
Maria, you're up.
Thanks for your consideration. Vice Mayor, council members, my name is Maria Guillén. I am a Visalia resident. My last name is G-U-I-L-L-E-N, accent over the E. And I did not come here to defend Emmanuel Hernandez Soto because I do not believe he is the true target here. I do not believe he should be in fact targeted and attacked in this manner. But I will say this, I'm not a person of privilege that gets to come here just to protest an individual that happened to like a post. I'm a woman of color living my best life in spite of years of working for a more social and just world. I'm going to share some comments now that are going to be very strong, but it's going to explain hopefully to my neighbors why and how I am affected by things people say and do. In troubling times, my friends have been there for me. Today is no exception. I choose to share some words of a longtime friend and social justice activist and former San Francisco Board of Supervisor, John Avalos. May it explain a little bit about why I believe in and value, and what I value, and how I want to show up in this world. John said, "I do not sanctify the violence that occurred. Violence is not justice. It does not liberate, but it also does not repair the harms that people like Charlie Kirk inflicted on vulnerable communities." Kirk was not a neutral debater or harmless provocateur. He built his career on mobilizing young people against immigrants, against queer and trans students, against people of color, and against the very idea of multiracial democracy. To paint him as a model of democratic virtue is to erase the very real suffering caused by the politics he championed. John also said that evidence that democracy still exists doesn't lie in whether Charlie Kirk's ability to speak hate safely on a college campus. No, it's found in the undocumented student on that campus being able to attend without fear of deportation, in trans students being able to walk across campus without harassment, in black and brown students thriving without racist exclusion, et cetera. To honor democracy is to fight for the safety and dignity of those who have never been safe in the American project as it has been defined. That is the work before us, not eulogizing and people that have sharpened the very blades that now cut us.
Your time is up.
Good evening, council. April Lancaster here this evening. I am here to defend Council Member Hernandez Soto. I am here to defend Councilmember Hernandez Soto. I think somebody should be. I think it's, at best, an absolute reach for anybody to be upset at a like of a Facebook comment. And I will add that whoever is his friend on social media and sharing that stuff in this way is just really, that's astoundingly terrible to do to a person. However, I want to say that, you know, this, these calls for resignations and things could have definitely been done in the past for issues such as a current City Council member having said that I was tainted in a newspaper, which was incredibly damaging emotionally for me. But, you know, I was raised in a Christian household, believe it or not. I was raised with Christian values, and what I did instead was I offered you forgiveness. And I truly do mean that because what Jesus taught us is above all else, love one another. And I lived my life by that. Even though I'm no longer considered a Christian, I live by the values, I think, more than the average Christian today does. And I just offer that to all of you folks, and, you know, I offer that love to all of you because I believe that that is the only way that we can move forward in today's age is we really need to just really honor one another and love each other and support that we have our own differences, and we all have our own experiences that go into who we are. So I just want to end by offering you all this quote because, in my opinion, this is something that was likable in that post. "They won't take the lesson that hate breeds violence. They'll go after the same minority groups that they always have that whip more fervor than ever before." And this is literal proof that that was true. So I appreciate all of you being here tonight. Councilmember Hernandez Soto, thank you for representing District Four, where my family has ancestrally lived for the last four generations. We appreciate you, and we believe that you are representing us very well. Thank you.
Last speaker.
Vice Mayor and members of the Council, Irene Lappin, Visalia. There is positively no law that prohibits a government official from sharing his or her personal opinion in the social media. Councilmember Soto, my renters live in your district, and they will continue to vote for you. My own topic today is there is a rule of thumb called Hanlon's razor. You've probably heard of it. Never attribute to malice that which can be adequately explained by stupidity. Now, one would hope you would want to base your decisions on either of those. But these days, so many of us can't help but wonder, how about using common sense? Think in terms of self-preservation. Main Street after midnight has been a magnet for crime, and not long ago, there were fatalities of the fifth quarter farther south. That bar is still open weekends till 2:00. Why? The death of the Darling Hotel year before last, after which your own darling, the on-site security owned by the owner of Rookies, who is president of the executive board of downtown Visalian's, was accused of negligence when a hotel desk guest was unresponsive. I'm glad, however, that after years of brawls at Crawdaddy's, it now closes at 11:00. And now the recent killing at Sebby's and its subsequent closure. Why were they allowed to have drinking till 2:00 a.m. in the first place? Why any bar in town? Granted, the city makes money off of them, but at what cost? And why tempt fate? Last, I was baffled at the decision made by three of you, three in the middle, a few months ago to uphold Rookies' CUP appeal. I asked myself, how can elected officials who say they want public safety give a pass to the owner who said right here, "Help me out here," when your own police department had shared with you numbers of incidences at Rookies that they had to respond to year after year? Help him out? How about helping us out, peaceful, law-abiding residents, in protecting us from irresponsible business practices that make people not want to go out anymore? Now, I don't go downtown anymore, except maybe once a year to my bank. I don't shop for that kind of stuff. I don't drink. I'm totally uninterested in the bar scene, and too many downtown restaurants have flunked their yearly health inspections. Cellar Door Salsa Tuesdays ended years ago when it changed hands, and those were for those of us who were serious about Latin dance, which is why there was virtually no crime on those nights. At this point, if I try anything new at all, it'll be the farmer's market, as that sounds like a safe, wholesome, and fun place to go. In conclusion, a high concentration of late-night bars poses a significant public health and safety risk for a city, including increased crime, noise pollution, public disturbance, drunk driving, and ultimately...
Your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.